Good evening and welcome to our Whole Life Church Town Hall. It is a town hall for us to talk about the next 10 years of Whole Life's history. We are so grateful that you are joining us. For those of you here in Florida and Orlando, thank you for braving the rain. I don't know what it was like when you were driving here, but for me, it was pretty crazy. So, thank you for being here. And for those of you who are watching us online, we are so grateful that you are a part of our family and that you are an active part of determining this church's future. So, welcome. It's really important to us. It's been important to us through the entire process that we've gone through that you're going to hear a little bit more in a few minutes, that this isn't just a bunch of people getting together and making a plan, but rather, it's a bunch of people who love Jesus coming together and asking God, "What's your will for Whole Life? Where do you want Whole Life to go in the next decade?" So, you are now a part of that process. And we think the right way for us to start off tonight is to spend some time praying. So, we're going to give you about three minutes to pray. I will start off with a prayer, and then I'd invite you to pray with somebody near you. You can pray on your own if you're more comfortable with that. You can pray with more than one person if you want. If you're at home and you're watching with the people that you care about at home, pray with them. If you're on your own at home, be praying for this process. But what we really genuinely want, and I do mean this with all my heart, we want God to lead. We want God's plans for Whole Life. Those are the plans that really matter. So, if you'll bow your heads, I'm going to have a prayer. Then I'll invite you to pray, and you'll know we're done with prayer when a video starts up. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come together this evening and talk about your plans for Whole Life. And Lord, we want that to be more than just lip service. We want it to be real. We want you to be the one determining where we're headed. And we pray you would give us the wisdom to understand that and to follow your lead. And now, Lord, may each of us take some time to come before you and pray for the church that we love, Whole Life.
You can feel it. The numbers show it. From attendance to baptisms to overflowing small communities, Whole Life is growing. Over a year ago, as church leadership, we asked ourselves this question, "How will we grow?" Maybe that sounds like a strange question since we are so obviously growing, but as leadership, we recognize that growth without intention and strategy often loses direction. And what starts as progress can quickly plateau or even regress. Think of it in terms of a grapevine. Given the right soil, water, and sunlight, it will grow. However, to reach its full potential, it needs a trellis and the thoughtful pruning of a gardener.
As board chair in 2024, my number-one priority was to put together a process that would allow us to create a trellis and a pruning for Whole Life. In short, a strategic plan that will guide us for the next five to 10 years. We felt it was important to put everything on the table, to be willing to prune, to be honest about areas that we needed to grow in and areas that weren't adding value, and to truly answer in a meaningful and deep way, "How will we grow?"
When I became board chair this year, Robert and I worked together to finish the process that was begun in 2025. Tonight, we're excited to share the outcome of hundreds of hours of work. The largest portion of that work was headed up by Taylor Bothwell and Christina Jimenez, who co-chaired the Board Subcommittee on Strategic Planning. Please give them a warm welcome as they describe our strategic planning process.
Good evening. We are so very excited to be able to share with you all of the work of the past year and a half. As co-chairs of the Strategic Planning Committee, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with an amazing group of individuals. Their names you can see on the screen with this work. And so, this includes current church leadership, past church leadership, church members with tenure from three years to more than 30-plus years. All of it with the idea and the goal of asking the question, "God, what do you have next for Whole Life?" And so, this has been an amazing process that we involved an expert consultant in as well to walk alongside us in this process and help support us as we put together what you will see tonight and what we will all be able to spend some time talking about. So, what does the past year and a half look like for the Strategic Planning Committee and this group of people? To give you a small snapshot of that by the numbers, it has been 29 official participants and many more unofficial,
and 2,700 prayerful hours of deliberation and co-creation,
more than 3,000 pages of notes for our brainstorm, our rewrites, our edits, and some very creative drawings at some point,
and countless cups of coffee. Let me tell you, this was a caffeinated group, thanks to our very own Randy, who made many a cup of coffee throughout these 2,700 hours. And in all seriousness, we are so privileged to have had the opportunity at this very opportune time, we're getting ready to celebrate 100 years of Whole Life's history, to have the opportunity to step back and to reflect and plan what the next 10 years of Whole Life's history could look like, and of course, the next 100. So, with that...
All right. The question becomes, "What have you gotten yourselves into tonight?" We are going to be walking you through five sections this evening. So, we will be talking about our mission, our values, our growth pathway, our growth marks, and ultimately, the vision for what all of this brings Whole Life to in 2036.
And we know this is the first time many of you will have been exposed to our vision work. And we want your questions. Please know this work has been an amplification of the work this church has been committed to you over the last 100 years. And we would like for you to submit your questions via text, whether you're in person or online, to the number that you see on screen. So, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for leaning in, and thank you for your questions.
Hi, I'm Andy McDonald. I came here to this church in 1984 to be youth pastor, and about eight months later, became the senior pastor. Was here for 37 and a half years, a great opportunity to serve. It was in the early 1990s that we recognized the importance of having a mission statement. We began to work on one. It was a little wordy, about a paragraph long. I could remember it, but most of the congregation couldn't. After the consultants came here in 2008, 2009 time, they recommended that we update our mission statement. We worked together with the board over a period of months and came up with what you're familiar with today as the mission of Whole Life Church, loving people into a lifelong friendship with God. Of course, a mission statement needed a good vision statement, so we had a conference together and labored over that. We wanted our vision to be about other people, not about us. And so, our vision was a church without walls, fully engaged in serving the people of our community. Things don't stay the same. Change is always happening. And so, it's come time now to update the mission and vision of the Whole Life Church. I'm excited to see what's going to happen and how it's going to lead us into the future as we develop and see how God wants this church to move forward.
Thank you, Andy. I know you're here right there. Thank you for your leadership. Over 37% of this church's history. Truly, one of the things that made me excited about coming to pastor at Whole Life was the mission and the vision of Whole Life. I believe in it with my whole heart, to be a church without walls as far as our vision goes, to love people into a lifelong friendship with God. These things speak to my heart. One of the things that we had to decide as a team, as we were thinking about the next 100 years, the next 10 years, is, do we leave our mission statement exactly the same? Or do we need to change it? There was a lot of conversation around that. Mission statements are incredibly important. They are your compass. They are your North Star. They are what you go back to. My master's degree is in organizational leadership, and they will tell you a clearly defined mission statement is vital. The other thing that they'll tell you is that a vision statement shouldn't be for more than five to 15 years at the most. Really, it's about a five-to-10-year thing. Most vision statements need to have an end cap on it. Think about when John F. Kennedy said, "Within the next decade, we will send a man to the moon and safely return him." That's a vision. It's bold. It's big. It seems impossible. But that's what vision statements are for. So, as our team looked at our current mission and our current vision, one of the things that hit us is, we don't want to see our vision go away to be a church without walls. We don't want to see that disappear as a new vision comes on because that has become more than just a vision for this church. I think it's become a part of our mission. It's a part of who we are. And so, as a team, what we talked about was, is there a way for us to work together to put these things into one mission statement? So, today, I'd like to present to you our proposal. Our proposal is this. Whole Life, we are a church without walls, loving people into Whole Life with God. The church without walls, I think you understand that from our vision. We view ourselves as so much more than what happens at 2,800 North Orange Avenue. We don't believe that people should have to come to us. We believe we should be going out, that we should be outward focused, as Andy said, not inward focused. Loving people. Love is the core of what I believe Whole Life is about. Love is defined in 1 Corinthians 13. Love is at the core. It has to be in our mission statement. It has to be a part of who we are. Loving people, and here's the part that I want you to go, "Oh, they did something cute. They put the church's name in there." We have a name for a reason. We believe that church is more than just a spiritual thing. We believe it is a community. We believe in mind, body, spirit, the whole person. And we believe that God wants all of you, not just part of you. And so, the reason we chose the word Whole Life is not simply because it's our church's name, but because we believe that we want to love people into a holistic relationship with God, where God touches what they do for a vocation, where God touches the food that they eat, not out of legalism, but because God cares about your health, that God cares about what you are doing and how you are emotionally. And so, for us, it was more than just putting the name of the church into the mission statement. It was a statement that we believe church is so much bigger than often it is made out to be, that we want people to follow Jesus and to have Whole Life with God. So, I am pleased to be able to present this part of our strategic plan that we are proposing to you tonight. We're now going to move into the next section.
I think every individual develops personal values in their lives. We may start out simply adopting the values that we were given as children, but then we personalize them as we grow. When Jeff and I got married, part of the development of our relationship was how we adapted and lived our personal values as a couple. Then we had children, and we chose how to share those values with our daughter and our son. For example, the value of kindness is expressed differently between grown adults than it is to a child who may witness the actions of a bully at school. Throughout life, I don't think my values have changed, but the understanding and implementation of those values certainly has. How I live those values through relationships, employment, being a neighbor, and even through loss has evolved. I hope I will always continue to reexamine my values in order to function, to grow, and to reach the potential that God has for me. You know, I've always loved how intentional our church community has been in its values. While serving as the worship pastor for Whole Life, every week, I was invited to incorporate our Whole Life values into worship in a real and substantial way. You know, it was a privilege, but it was also a challenge because just like in anyone's personal life, the church continues to go through many changes. Now, I love that Whole Life has never been intimidated by change, and I'm looking forward to hearing from Melanie about what the new expression of our values will be in the future.
Thank you, Tammy. About four years ago, my husband Tim and I started attending Whole Life online. We loved the music. We loved the production value of being able to sit in our living room and still feel like we were connected through the TV. But what really connected us to Whole Life were the values. And these values weren't just aspirational. They weren't some lofty ideal that we hoped we would eventually reach. The values we noticed were the ones that were being lived out in a variety of ways. And that was so powerful to us. And so, partly the reason why we are here, when I was invited to come down and take Tammy's job when Tammy retired, part of the reason we came here were the values. So, for someone who absolutely loves the values that Whole Life has had over the past several years, I just want to let you know that our values haven't changed. They have been refined. Some of them have been, actually, all of them have been renamed. But I recognize, we all recognize that values make up the core of who we are. They help us determine what direction we're going to go. They help us make the decisions that we're going to make. And so, we didn't want to lose what makes Whole Life Whole Life. So, the values that we discussed, first of all, we noticed that there were some values that we had that were implicit. We talked about them, and we lived them out, but they weren't actually explicitly mentioned in our values list. And it was important for us to name those values. And other values, we felt like could be wrapped up into some concepts. For example, love is so absolutely core to our mission. It pervades everything that we do. So, it wasn't maybe necessary to mention it specifically as a separate value. So, I want to share the values with you that we came up with. The first value is we are inspired. What does that mean? That means that we recognize the Bible as a place where conversations start, not where conversations end. And we also recognize that God inspires us in a variety of ways, through the Bible, through prayer, through spiritual discipline, through spending time together and listening to each other. And we wanted to use a word that encompassed all the different ways that we feel God inspires us. The second word is we are inclusive. Everyone belongs here. At Whole Life, all means all. We liked this word because it was proactive. We love the acceptance, but we wanted to take the next step of being inclusive. And that looks like we are trying to break down barriers for our special needs family members. It means that when we plan worship services, we make them as accessible as possible. It means that we use, you know, a variety of people who come and participate in the worship service because we want everyone to be included and to be represented. Our third value is we are involved. We participate in a variety of ways. Involved means being involved in small communities. It means being involved in our service projects. We want everyone to participate in the life and vision of Whole Life. Fourth, we are intentional. Every single thing that we do is guided by our mission, vision, and values. That was something that wasn't listed in our previous list, and we felt like it was so important, we wanted to include it. We're also innovative. This morning, we started a brand-new online community. You might have noticed the little discs on the back of the chair. Maybe you've actually used them. We wanted you to have access. We also wanted you to be able to engage with our new AI, Gabby. And these are not just fun, cute things that we do just to be cool. We feel like these are intentional ways that we can advance the kingdom of God and serve our community. So, you may have noticed a pattern here. We are inspired. We are inclusive. We are involved. We are intentional. We are innovative. And of course, this was intentional because with our values at Whole Life, we want to be all in.
Hello. I'm Craig Moore, and I've been a member at Whole Life for over 20 years, and I currently serve on the board.
And I'm Kay Barnett. I'm also a board member, and I've been attending Whole Life for about 14 years. Both Craig and I work as hospital administrators. And people often ask us, "What's the most important part of our job?"
I think they expect us to say, "Leading teams" or "Making tough decisions." And while those are critical, the truth is, the most vital part of our day is strategy.
We operate on a plan, a detailed roadmap for everything we do. We strategize our patient intake process to reduce wait times. We strategize our technology investments to ensure our doctors have the best tools. We strategize our financial health so we can afford to serve our community, regardless of their ability to pay.
And without a clear, well-executed strategy, a hospital is just a building with doctors. It's a chaotic collection of good intentions, not a cohesive institution that can save lives. The same principle applies to an institution many people may not think of in the same way, and that's a church. Just like a hospital, a church is more than just a building. It's a living organism with a sacred mission, and it needs a strategy to thrive.
A hospital's strategy saves physical lives. A church's strategy can transform spiritual ones. Both require vision, planning, and dedicated execution to truly fulfill their purpose because whether you're healing a body or nurturing a soul, the unseen pillars of strategy are what hold everything together.
All right, church, so, strategy. I am so glad to be part of our church that has a strategy that wants to have a growth pathway plan. And so, that's what we call here our strategy. It's called our growth pathway. In churches, normally, they have a discipleship plan. And this discipleship plan, a lot of times, tries to bring people from outside of the church to get baptized, and sometimes, it's kind of like, that's it. So, the way you want to do, we want to go about a strategy here or a growth pathway plan is already identifying these four pillars that already exist in our church. So, currently, we have worship named here, which we meet every Saturday. We have a worship time at home. Some people attend online. We also connect. It's another pillar here where small communities, when I got here, we talked about community, small groups, but now, small communities is really being part of our culture here. And we want to be able to create relational spaces where we can build community. The next one is to serve because serving is an opportunity to transform ourselves, to create space for people to serve and develop their talents. That's very biblical as well. And I love, if I can define our church with one word, it's intentional. And we want to be intentional about inviting people to join us here in what we do. Like, for example, at an event like Barn Party, we can invite anyone to join for, to grow with us. So, the fifth one is grow. But I would say, grow here, it's, we want to develop a detailed and intentional growth pathway plan with steps in how we are going to support people, not only for them to move to another church or just to get baptized, but actually, to grow as whole, to develop themselves in different areas of their life. Because as Ken mentioned here, the growth that God wants us to experience, it's not only spiritual. So, we want to be this place, and we are going to develop a detailed growth pathway plan. Thank you.
Hello, church family. My name is Tomas, and my family and I have been part of Whole Life for nearly 10 years. Here at church, I serve as a director of the Orlando City Pathfinders. I've led Sabbath School classes, and I also serve on our church board. Professionally, I'm an entrepreneur. I've built, scaled, and sold the marketing technology business, and I'm also the proud father of three. Across all these roles in business, leadership, and in parenting, I've learned something very important. Outcomes matter. Defining what success looks like helps you know if you're moving in the right direction, if your daily work is actually making a difference, and if you're hitting the bullseye. When an organization is healthy and effective, everything it does is aligned with its outcomes. That's why I'm so excited that our church has created growth marks, the outcomes of our new vision. These growth marks give us five simple, yet powerful questions that each of us can ask ourselves at any point in our Christian journey. Am I deepening my relationship with God? Am I embracing and uplifting others on their journey? Am I participating in community? Am I giving my resources generously? Am I living holistically, healthy, in body and strong in spirit? These questions give us focus, clarity, and direction. They help us live with purpose, and they allow us, as a church family, to celebrate when we are growing together in the ways that truly matter. I'm excited to see how these growth marks will shape us, not just today, but for the next 10, 50, even 100 years.
Well, thank you, Tomas, for introducing us to outcomes, which from this point on, we're going to refer as growth marks. So, just to make sure that we're making that connection, and when you hear that, you'll know what we're talking about. And we know that as a diverse body of followers, that all of... that all of our journeys look a little bit different for everyone. So how are we going to measure that growth over time so that we know that all the things that we just talked about before, Tomas, how do we know that we're actually hitting the marks on those? So the key is for each of us is to determine on our journey what those next steps are in growth, and then actually measure them against these questions so that we have a benchmark. So question one is, as he went over, am I deepening my relationship? Oh, sorry, thank you. Regardless of where you are in your relationship with God, there's always something deeper. There's always a next step. There's always another piece to the journey. And for some, that could be spiritual discipline. It could be following after Denise and taking the homework from two weeks ago and doing the homework on something really deep. Or being confounded by Ken's message today, what do I really believe about heaven and hell? It gets deep, right? And through all that, if we're praying for the Holy Spirit to help us as a whole and praying for each other on that journey, and that's going to help us yield the spiritual fruit and the Growth Marks we're looking for.
Absolutely. And Growth Mark two, am I embracing and uplifting others on their journey? We are not all on the same journey. Our journeys look different, and it is important to honor other people's journeys, maybe especially when they look different than ours. Taking the next step may look like listening to other people's stories without judgment, discerning how God is moving in someone's life, and participating and encouraging that movement. Or it may look like praying with or for other people and sharing our own stories and being intentionally engaged.
The third question is probably the one most personal to me and one that, as we all sat and went through these, that I probably struggled with what we came up with wording. But am I participating in community? And participating in community, you have to understand that it has to be more than just showing up. That can't be enough. And it has to be that there's an inclusion factor, that if I show up, I will be included. I will be found, you know, someone will help me find what my spiritual gifts are, help me plug in and actually be a contributing, loved member of the family. And that means just moving from being a spectator. It means moving to be involved in finding those places. And also from our perspective, to help you as a church family, us all together, to do that. So really, it comes down to celebrating the diversity that we have here. Whether that's what we mentioned early, Melanie mentioned special needs, or whatever it is that is in your life that you need someone to walk alongside of us, that's part of participating in community, because that's when we feel loved. That's when we feel like we belong. And when you belong, that's where you want to be.
And am I giving resources generously? Generosity isn't about the size of the gift, it's about posture of the heart. When we give, we join God in blessing others and fueling the mission of Whole Life Church, which reaches far outside ourselves, blessing our community. Your next step in sharing resources generously may be making your financial gift more consistent, or it may be volunteering your time, or it may be giving a particular talent you have that would benefit the Whole Life family.
Excellent. And then, am I living holistically? And this is one that we wrestled with, and what does it mean? And we debated, what's the, holistically, what does it mean? What does it mean to me? What does it mean to you? And as we take care of ourselves and we do all the things that we, physically, mentally, relationally, but we're all living together in this journey as a Whole Life family. And God wants us to have it, have life, have it more abundantly. So your next step may involve something different than my next step. But whatever it is, you know, if, whether that's going to the gym, seeing a therapist, whatever it might be, just, or maybe talking to the pastoral team here, anything that we're struggling with, we want to know, want you to know that that's part of being holistic, is we're looking to not just go it alone, but to go with it together and find that, you know, to find that support that you so desperately need for some of us.
How far do you travel to be here, and why do you choose to travel that far?
About 45 minutes, and I love Whole Life Church.
So you must go past other churches on the way here. Why this one?
My daughter sings here, and it's our family church now. And we've been here for over five years.
Why do you choose Whole Life? There's lots of options. Why for you, Whole Life?
I think everyone says community, and that can be argued, that's a big one. But to me, the Christ-centered messages are essential.
I travel about an hour from Lakeland to Orlando. And the reason being is because the church right down the street from my house isn't very open and accepting, and I'm LGBTQ. So Whole Life is a place that I feel family, I feel connected, I feel affirmed, I feel accepted, and I feel loved.
Damaris, tell me about your niece that watches us online.
My niece had grown up in the Seventh-day Adventist Church, but she had stopped attending, I'd say, over two years. And I had been talking to her, and she just did not like attending the church that she had grown up in because it was old-fashioned, as she put it, and very legalistic. And I talked to her about ours, and she started watching, and she's loved it. And it's been over three months, and she doesn't miss a service.
Why Whole Life? Why do you attend here?
Because there's a place for my son. There is a ministry for special needs children here. And where he feels welcome, and we feel welcome to bring him.
So we live in Winter Garden, so we travel about 30 minutes to be here. We believe that Whole Life Church really embodies what we want to see in a church community, providing spaces for our children. There's so much more enrichment, community outreach, all the things that we believe Christ asks us to do.
We drive for one hour to come here, and we just love it here. We feel welcomed here. Ever since the first time we came, I knew that I just wanted to come here to this church. Sometimes we stay at home and we just watch online. But we just love it here. We just feel like we don't have to pretend to be somebody, to be here, we're just ourselves.
I don't feel judged here. I feel very welcome, and we love it. It's about 45 minutes. Depending on traffic, it'll be a little bit more. The reason why we drive here is because we felt welcome from day one. And we love the worship service, just the community itself, and that's what keeps us coming back.
It's about 45 minutes. Sometime it could be an hour, depending on traffic. I used to live in Winter Park when I started coming to the church, and then I moved to Davenport. I kept procrastinating on finding another church, and then I decided, it's just once a week I can make the drive because I really like the church, so I kept coming here.
It takes us about an hour and 10 minutes. If we come to second service, it can take anywhere to two hours. There's nothing else like Whole Life Church.
The music, the sermon, the feeling of acceptance, I mean, there's nothing like it.
You feel the love as soon as you come, and you always feel encouraged and re-energized to take that out.
I'm going to try not to be emotional here. I did OK in practice. I've pastored a number of churches, and I love them all. And Whole Life is one of the first churches I could invite anybody I wanted to to come. I don't know if you understand how special that is. Somebody challenged me recently. They said, Ken, there's plenty of churches that have contemporary worship formats like you guys do. And I said, you're 100% right, there are. But that's not what Whole Life is. We're not our worship format. We're the values that you heard earlier. We're inspired. We believe in God's Word. We believe in getting closer to God. When you saw those Growth Markers, you saw the outcomes. We care about you spiritually growing. This isn't just show up and attend a service and walk away. It's about life transformation. It's about anybody who walks through these doors knowing that not only they are allowed, allowed... You hear that word? Allowed? Do you allow your children to be a part of your family? Family, I think sometimes at Whole Life, you take it so for granted because some of you have been here so long. I don't. I've been here for four years. I do not take this for granted. I had neighbors at one of the churches that I passed, so they desperately wanted to invite to my church. I love them, but I knew that there was no pathway forward for them. There was nothing that, they might have been treated OK, but there was nowhere that they were going to be able to move forward. And at Whole Life, everybody is not just allowed to attend. You're included. From the moment you show up, we say, where's a great place that you can get involved? What can you do? How can you be a part of things? Family, if there aren't a lot of Seventh-day Adventist churches like that, shouldn't there be? Everybody deserves Whole Life. Everybody deserves to be able to come to a church with their child, whether they have special needs or not. Everybody deserves to be wanted despite the label that society may put on them. Everybody deserves that. And I challenged our team to do the interviews today because I wanted you to know, this isn't something we cherry-picked over the course of the last six months. They just went out in the lobby. And people travel, travel significant distances to be here. I have one family that told me that they literally, I think they drive over two or three hours to be here every other week, and they get a hotel on Friday night because this is the only place they feel like they can attend a Seventh-day Adventist church where they'll be welcomed and where they can believe in what is happening in that church. It makes my heart happy when one of my new members, during new member orientation, we tell them, hey, everybody's welcome here. And if you don't feel comfortable in a church where everybody's welcome, there are probably other churches that will have the attitude that you're looking for. And that member took me up the next week and invited somebody that they cared about, a married gay couple to come to church here because they said, you'll be safe, you'll be wanted, you can experience Christ. Family, everybody deserves a church family that will love them and grow with them. And so that's why I'm so excited to share with you our vision for the next 10 years. We're calling it Amplify 2036 because 2026 is our 100-year anniversary, and so it'll be the first 10 of the next 100. And of course, we all hope Jesus comes back. Let me just put it out there for those of you who heard this. Yes, we are, yes. I'll be happy if we don't have to implement this plan at all. But as Seventh-day Adventists, we have always lived in the paradox of believing that Jesus is coming back right away and planning as if he's not. So by 2036, our vision is that Whole Life will amplify our culture of spiritual growth, wholeness, and inclusion through a vibrant network of 100 churches and microsites. Now, somebody asked me, how'd you come up with the number 100? And if I'm going to be honest with you, it's because it's a big number. If I'm going to be honest with you, it's not that we went out and did market research and said, OK, we can do this. It was, we asked ourselves, what's the biggest number that we think we can't reach? And we picked it. And family, can I tell you, since we came up with this proposal, without me going and saying a word to anybody, I have had four different groups come to me and say, Ken, how can we have a Whole Life in our community? One's in a foreign country. We had a chaplain from another country attend our church. And he came up to me afterwards and he said, hey, I'm a Seventh-day Adventist chaplain in this other country, at a Seventh-day Adventist hospital. We've been watching you online because we want a church like yours to support our hospital. How can we do that? How can you partner to help us figure that out? I said, well, I've got to go to the church and figure out whether they're behind that or not before I can promise anything. And he said, we're rolling. We are ready to go. We need this. I've had so many different people approach me and say, hey, could we get a Whole Life in our community? Could you help us figure out how to plan a church like that? Could you have a campus, a campus of Whole Life in our community? What about, do you know that every weekend, over 600 people attend our services online? They attend from all over the world, all over the United States. I get letters and emails from them. Like you heard Damaris talk about. There are people who don't feel like they have a place that they can attend. And somebody would say, hey, there's that Whole Life Church in Orlando. You should check that out. How can we equip those people not to just watch from home, but to actually have community where they're at? How could we help them say, oh, you could start inviting some of your friends and neighbors to come to your house, or maybe you want to rent a local room at the YMCA? Or how can we walk with you? Maybe you're a college student, and you're like, hey, I want to have my friends. Like my daughter, who goes to college, and she says, I just miss Whole Life. There's a bunch of churches, but I just miss Whole Life. And she invites her friends to watch Whole Life, and they're like, this is cool. How can we, as a church, intentionally, over the next 10 years, do more than say, yeah, it's cool that you're watching, but say, no, we're going to actually equip you. We're going to grow with you. We're going to put time and effort into working with you. You know, for many years, this church was called the Hospital Church. And I believe this church has a special relationship with Advent Health and with the Health Ministry of the Seventh-day Adventist Church. How can we help hospitals in the Advent Health footprint who say, hey, we might like to have some, not your church service in our hospital, but we might like to figure out how to show some stuff in our chapel. Our chaplains might like to use some of your stuff. Or, hey, our local church would like to get some ideas from how you guys work and interact with Advent Health on how they can do that. These are the practical ways that we can put this Amplify 2036 into practice. Family, I am proud of this church because I believe over the last 15 years, this church has become a church without walls, to the point we can actually put it in our mission statement. And now it's time to take that and amplify it. I'd like to invite upfront with me panelists. If you didn't, if you have questions, and if I were you, I would have a lot of them. You are more than welcome to text them in. If you're watching online, you can go into the chat and put them in the chat. And we have Michael Paradise, who's one of our board members, who will be moderating our panel discussion. Again, if you are inside of our building, there is that text number that's up on the screen. You can also take your phone and tap the little circle, and it will just automatically open up your text messaging. It's kind of freaky how that works. And you can text a question to us, and we would be happy to do our best to give you an answer. We'd be happy to hear your thoughts, your reactions to what you've heard tonight. We are so excited to be able to share this with you, and we recognize there is wisdom to be gained from each one of you here. The board very intentionally did not just pass this. This is going to go to a board meeting or to a church business meeting in a month because we care about this church investing and believing in this. And so that's why we've given you a month. This is going to go up on our website so people can watch this, people who weren't able to be here today. able to be here today, and be able to give us input as well. And so we really, truly want to hear from you if you have some thoughts. And so thank you, Michael, for moderating our conversation.
Let's thank our group that put so much time and energy into this. It's an inspiring mission and vision, and it's great to hear our values and the reaffirmation of those values. So thank you to each one of you here on the platform and those that you represent that aren't here right now for all of the energy you've put into this. This is a church that cares about these things, and this is a church that, right now, has questions about what it means to pull off what we have suggested here and would like to discuss it a little bit further. And Ken, I'd like to start our Q and A here by encouraging you, text in those questions to the number that you see. This is a good opportunity for an anonymous question, and let's get real about this. Because if we're going to enact this mission, this vision, this plan, then we all need to be energized and we all need to own it. So let's ask our questions now, and I see that you guys are doing that. I'd like to start by just prompting a little bit more about what you shared from people outside our church family who have asked you, Ken, how can we get Whole Life to be here? You've mentioned that there's somebody that's overseas that has asked about that. There are people all over the place that have asked, but what is it that you see that they want in their place that Whole Life represents?
The president of our conference, Alan Machado, said something that I think kind of goes to this point. Alan, when I was interviewing here, and I've heard him say it several times since, says that every city should have a Whole Life. A place where everybody is included. An inclusive place where people can be. And so that's really what I hear when I hear from people. What I hear them say is, I love my Seventh-day Adventist denomination. I believe in the fundamental beliefs of this Seventh-day Adventist church. I believe in those things, but I'm not finding a place where I can bring my friends and neighbors. I'm not finding a place that when I invite somebody to come to church, I know that they are going to come and they're going to have an experience with Christ where they feel close to the Christ. I mean, think about this. You guys know for a fact, if you worship here at this church, we have people that attend Whole Life that are not Christians. We have people who are Hindu, who come from Islam. And as a hospital church, it's been so important that if you're a doctor or if you're an administrator and you want to invite your friends to come, that you don't have to worry about doing that, that you can say, absolutely, doesn't matter whether you're atheist or whatever, nobody's going to treat you as if you're less than or you're stupid for believing what you believe, but you're going to be treated with dignity and respect and like you are wanted here. And of course, we're never going to undercut what we believe as Seventh-day Adventist Christians, but we're going to do it in a way that's loving, that's kind, that's inclusive, that gives people the chance to experience the love of Christ that we believe in so much. And so that's what I hear from people. And I will tell you that, again, the Florida Conference is very much interested in having church plants and winter garden in Lake Nona, and they would very much like for Whole Life to be involved in that. And so I think I can say that without speaking out of term, that the Florida Conference is looking for churches to do church plants in that area. And so that would be something that if this is the road we go down, it would be something we would explore with the conference, what that would look like and what those opportunities might be.
We've heard some great comments already that you've texted in about the clarity and simplicity and how what was presented tonight is aligned closely with who we are. There are also some good questions coming in. One of them is about, you mentioned Adventist principles of health, and there are some other Adventist staples like education that we did not hear represented tonight. How does, how will this mission and this growth plan impact Adventist education and even more specifically Orlando Junior Academy?
Absolutely. Great question. I'm guessing none of the rest of you are wanting to jump in on that one? Okay, I'll jump in on that one. So here's what I love about Whole Life. I have pastored, I have never pastored a church that wasn't a constituent church of a local school. And I can tell you, in all the years that I've done it, I always felt like the way that we are doing it has needed to evolve and change with the times. Most Adventist churches sponsor a school, and it doesn't matter whether they have 100 students or 10. They put in a certain amount of money, and usually, actually, if enrollment goes down, sponsorship has to go up from the church. And so there's not really an accountability there on the school side of things. And so I love the relationship that we currently have with Orlando Junior Academy. We sponsor kids to go to Orlando Junior Academy. But I love, it goes one step further at Whole Life. I had a child, and one of the really difficult spot in our ministry was we had a child that did not fit in the school that they were in. And the school, I'm not here to disparage that school. It's just our child wasn't fitting in that school. And so we wound up sending them to another Seventh-day Adventist school because that was what was better for them. And so one of the things I'm very proud of about Whole Life is that we not only sponsor kids to go to OJA, we sponsor kids to go to Fleece, to Forest City. If it's an Adventist school in the Orlando region, we will give the same amount of money to go to another Adventist school if that's what's right for your child. So we very much believe and support Adventist education. We just believe that schools need to be competitive. They need to think about how they're going to support themselves because we're in the business of sending kids to Adventist schools, not to keeping Adventist schools alive that don't have students.
Ken, along the same lines, I think all things that we touch on here at Whole Life Church should be done with excellence. I think our Seventh-day Adventist schools should have that same excellence and that we should promote that and we should encourage that, and we should hold all of our institutions to that accountability. I do believe that our schools should be a place that people are knocking down the doors to get into. We should not have discussions about whether or not we can keep attendance because people just want to be there. And in order to do that, we need to have excellence. And as a sponsoring church or a church that is willing to sponsor, we should lean into that and create that excellence and expect that excellence back from them, to create human beings that are not only well-educated, but they align perfectly with our values and our mission statements as well.
If I can add one more thing, I am absolutely thrilled with Charlene Currit, who's the new principal at Orlando Junior Academy. I could not be more excited about her leadership. She has been on the phone with me and asking me to be involved in their strategic planning, of which I said, absolutely, I will be a part of that because we want Orlando Junior Academy to be strong. We want it to be excellent. We also need it to reflect the values of Whole Life. And I know Charlene believes in that, and I know Charlene is working towards that. And so that's why I'm so thrilled to be partnering with her. Because when I say, I think one of the difficult things as a pastor is when you recommend a child to go to a school and a parent comes back and goes, why would you have ever made that recommendation? It's a horrible experience. And I've had that happen. And it's hard. And sometimes I say, well, you know, it's maybe just this wasn't the right school for your child. So, but what I want you to know is, I 100% believe in where Orlando Junior Academy is headed right now. I believe, I believe great days are ahead, and I am so thrilled to be working with OJA for the future.
Thank you. I'd like to remind you that all of these, all of your questions come in, they're anonymous. This one says, I love the idea of microsites and spreading to locations around the world and believe this is the type of vision necessary for today. Whole Life Church is a church desperately needed by so many. That being said, our Orlando location has been bursting at the seams for longer than seems reasonable. Being located next to the main campus of Advent Health and AHU, is there serious conversation happening about building a bigger facility?
There is.
The next question that...
That's...
We can go to the next question.
So I know, I'm not trying to be cagey with you, but we are having serious conversations. I don't want to compromise those conversations at this point that we're in, but we are having serious conversations, expanding the size of our worship center and in partnership with others, and we'll just leave it there.
Alfred, as the, as our current board chair, one of the questions that's come in has said, if there's one investment that we could make as a church to support this Amplify 100 vision, what would that investment be?
This vision will require a lot of effort. It's not a small number. It's out there. And it all comes from the belief that all of us have, that we have a grand future ahead of us. So that will require a lot of resources to equip this vision. It means all kinds of different resources to support that many different sites and people doing it. So it's a generation of content. It's having the team, the backup here, let me call it headquarters, basically to support this vision. So the board has a very active thought process about how we should fund that. We understand that through the means that we have today, it's going to be very challenging. So we have to be very innovative on how we are going to approach it. And we understand that there are going to be different kinds of requirements. Fixed assets, so equipment in order to support people, and as I mentioned before, generation of content. So there is a very active thought process going on.
A couple of you have called out that this planning team has been led in part by young adults in our church family, and that's worth noting, and that actually applies to our value of inclusiveness. So thank you to our young adults for leading out in this process. But we really have been inclusive. We've seen inclusivity of many different perspectives here, which is valuable. I'd like to hear from each of you on this question, and if I could hold you to just a sentence or two for your response. What's the difference between the old plan and the new plan? The old vision and the new vision? The old mission and the new mission? If you could summarize that in one statement, what's the difference between the old and the new?
I'll go first. That's because I want to get out there first and not have to follow anyone. For me, it's about clarity. Creating, it's really just about the clarity of saying, what will success look like for us when we accomplish it? I've had the benefit of being here now 20-plus years and meeting my bride here and having my children here and having them grow up there and leaning into the previous leadership and the history of that. Being able to take this and say, what will my children, what can my children expect in 10 years from this church is really what has been exciting for me.
You were smart to go first because I wanted to say that, so seconding that. But I think what I would also add is combining together the elements of our old mission and vision to be able to keep those together and say, our vision was to be a church without walls. We're doing that, and that's actually our mission that's not going to change. And so I think that's why it's so critical that's now a part of our mission because that's a part of our identity that we are every single day, not just something we're working towards.
I'll say that you can tell if a church is healthy if it's growing, and we are growing. It's a little bit more difficult to know if people are growing. How do you measure that? How do you determine whether or not you're actually living out your mission, you're actually living out your values if there are no measuring marks? So that was something that we focused on specifically in our meetings, is determining what does a healthy whole lifer look like? What questions can we ask at different intervals that will help people measure themselves, whether they're growing in their relationship with God, whether they're participating in community, whether they are actually, you know, giving of their resources? So I think that's one thing that we wanted to do is be very specific about how do we measure whether or not we're successful?
I would add that I heard the question from you, how do we grow for a few years now? And there are always many options in front of you. Are we going to become a mega church? Are we going to become a multi-site church? Are we going to, how are we going to grow? And what gives me satisfaction is to see that there's been a solid answer to this question through the process. So there is a vision, there's been a lot of thought behind it, and there is a very firm proposal on how we should address our growth, but not losing sight of where we came from. So understanding that the basic values that brought us to this point are going to also guide whatever we're going to do in the future. So at the end, you know, I feel happy by the fact that it's a connection between our future, considering our present, but not forgetting our past.
You know, Kim Johnson served on our board for several years, and one of the questions he'd always asked was, well, how do we know? How do we know that we're accomplishing what we're wanting to accomplish? How do we know that? How do we measure that? And that one really hit home for me because as a church, what do you do? Do you measure it on baptisms? Do you measure it on the number of people that come to your church services? Is that what matters? And what I love about this is it articulates things that I think truly do matter. You know, am I growing? Is my relationship with God deepening? Am I walking with others on their journey? These are things that, as we worked with our consultant, they showed us how we can create a survey that asks those questions in maybe a little different way, but it asks specific questions that kind of help us see, are we actually helping our church grow in their spiritual relationship? Are we helping people understand how to walk with others in their relationship? Are we helping people know what it looks like to live holistically? And for me, that's one of my favorite things that has, I think, been added on to what Whole Life has always been doing, but a way to measure what we're doing.
The danger with going last is everything that I was thinking has already been beautifully articulated by my peers. Ken, I was, I was thinking a very similar thought. I love how in our plan, we've honored where we've come from, and we've also acknowledged and amplified where we're headed. And I love the way with our, with our growth marks, how these questions can serve both as a self-reflection. I'm a very pensive person. I love that I can take those questions, process them myself, and we can also use those as a great way to survey our church, also our, and they have great mobility across all of the pillars of our church. So very excited about the ability to have a really strong pulse check.
Culture is all about how we do things. As we export our culture into microsites and other church locations, how do we export the intangibles in our Whole Life way?
I've been a member at Whole Life for four years, and for those of you who have been here five years or longer, I want to say thank you for the culture that you have built here and what you have created. And I know that's not something that happens overnight. And so this is actually a question that we wrestled with and discussed a lot as a team to say, the things that we are talking about, the language that we are putting around our values, those growth marks, is so critical, not only for the people in this room, but for the people watching online and the people who are joining these microsites, to be able to use the same language to describe the intangibles you're trying to build. And building something from scratch is going to require the intentionality, and it's going to require accountability of that, which I think is so important to the resource discussion that Alfred... that Alfred answered of, we have to be intentional in doing both as we expand beyond these walls.
I also think, as I've been able to be involved in some of the conversations with, with other groups who are interested in being or kind of living out Whole Life, and I think one really important thing is, is also the questions that we ask about what their expectations are. What is it about Whole Life that you want in your community? Because if it's just progressive worship, you know, if, if it's just, you know, technology or if it's, it's any of these kinds of things, then that's the wrong thing. So I think really making sure that we understand what other people's expectations are of what they want from Whole Life, we can make sure that our values align and our mission is aligned and, and make it happen.
Just adding to that, those are much more thoughtful than I was going to be, but I know over the last 20 years, our leadership has wrestled with people who said, this may not be the place for me. And it is hurt at times. To truly embrace and to have this culture, we will have to have those conversations. And truly, there's going to be times when it's not the right fit, and you're going to have to walk that walk and say, the, what we gain from this journey, as all of us, has been so much better than the conversations we've had to have along the way. And it is, that's going to be part of that journey. And how, how will we commit to our culture and expectations of being a church without walls?
One more. I think that part of it is also about leadership. And I think that we have been blessed with wonderful leadership. So from the senior pastor to the whole staff of this church, the cultural alignment that we have, you know, the smooth way that we see that things are dealt here, gives us the confidence that there is going to be leadership in order to train and to prepare those places as we go, because obviously, there are always risks involved in this. But I think that the strong leadership that we have enables us for this mission.
You spoke to leadership, and Robert, I heard from your response, how is it that we are going to be involved? One question that's come up in our chat tonight is, how do, how does this group here see us as a church getting involved now in this vision? What do we do now? Is this a wait and see? Hold for instruction? What can I do now to get engaged in what's happening?
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll weigh in on that. I think for me, and I'll speak about Robert's next steps and Robert's family's next steps. Robert's family is going to lean into this and say, how am I going to start living this today? How am I going to live as a family dedicated to being a church without walls? How am I going to invest my time and my treasure in leaning in? Get that? See what I did there? Leaning in to what 2036 is going to look like. I, I, I think that's the first thing we can do. Ken mentioned it earlier, we're, we're on a journey. And that journey, it is, in all things, needs to be ratified. So the, so the specifics about this plan, you know, we're going to, we're going to get there. But the fact that we are on the journey of a church without walls, of a church where everyone is invited and all can feel comfortable being here, is something that I can actually live out today, and will expect my family to lean into and to contribute today.
The idea, the concept of extending beyond our local campus here implies that we might step on the toes of some others. We exist in, within the structure of the Seventh-day Adventist Church and the Florida Conference, more specifically. How does the Florida Conference feel about this plan? Do they know about this plan? How about that first? How does the Florida Conference feel about this plan?
Apparently, they will now.
They're, they're texting, you know, right now. Let's start with that.
Sure. Yeah. So I have not sat down and done this detailed presentation to them like I have to you. However, I have sat down with them and given the high-level idea of what we're looking at, the idea of our vision and our mission. And what I will say is, we're going to, as I tell them, you pay my paycheck, so I know that. So we're going, we are working with the Florida Conference. I appreciate my leadership there, and we will work with them. And in the end, if the Florida Conference says that there's a part of what we want to do that they're not okay with us doing, they're the boss. But we're also going to move forward as we hear God asking us to move forward. And I am just hopeful, I've found that, I'm an optimist by nature when it comes to things. I, I feel like if God is for us, if God's called us to this mission, there will be obstacles. I can tell you right now, the Florida Conference is thrilled with the idea of us planting churches, loves that idea. Having multiple campuses, probably not as much. That's okay. It's a conversation. And like, like anything in your marriage or in any other relationship, you have to respect the other people that are in a relationship with you. You have to have those conversations with them. I'd like to work with Advent Health a lot, but I'm going to need to respect the limits that they're going to need to have on our relationship and what that needs to look like. So there's going to be a lot of conversations around this, but one of the things that, that it's really important to me as a leader, that I'm committed to respect, the respect of, of having conversations, saying, what do you think? And what I, what I have heard over the last four years of my ministry here at Whole Life is the Florida Conference saying, rah rah rah, we love you guys, thank you for what you're doing in your community. And so I'm very hopeful that that will continue.
Let's extend that outside of Florida Conference, where we would potentially have microsites and churches meeting in other places? How would we avoid stepping on the toes or encroaching on someone else's turf?
You know, I don't break into other people's houses without permission. And just, just to put it bluntly, if we're going to go to another conference, we're going to talk to them. We're not just going to show up and be like, here we are, deal with it. On the other hand, if there are people that are worshiping in their home, you're welcome. You're welcome. And if those people start a small, a small community inside their home, we're going to nurture and support them from here. You're welcome. And if they want to become a company, which is a technical title inside of the Seventh-day Adventist Church, they're going to need to work with the conference in which they are to make that happen. We're not going to be working outside of, you know, I, I wouldn't want somebody to come into Whole Life and start a Sabbath School class and not ask me how I felt about it. And so, so we're going to be respectful in all these ways, but we're also going to go ahead and respect that there are people in far-flung places in the world that do not have a place to worship. And if we can be that place for worship, because they're not going to go somewhere else, you're welcome. We're going to be helpful with that. But again, we are going to respect church organization, and is, you know, we're going to do that.
As we close our Q and A time, what's one thing you're most excited about in the next 10 years of Whole Life Church? One thing you are most excited about that energizes you most about our next 10 years?
I'm most excited about our growth. I have loved being a member of Whole Life the last four years, and I felt loved and at home from the very first time I came to Whole Life. Pastor Andy was actually our pastor at the time, shortly before Ken joined, and I, I just love the growth I've seen in, in the four years I've been at Whole Life, and I can't wait to see what the next 10-plus years look like. I love the intentionality with which we've created our, our vision plan, and I, I truly can't wait to see it come to life.
I look forward to our, to our church truly looking like what we think heaven will look like when we worship. There will be a, just a smattering of every possible culture like we have now, just more of that. That's just, I love that.
We played the video of people who drive here and watch and get to experience it, and I can't wait to hear the stories 10 years from now of people who got to experience God's love in a way that they never would have without this.
I'm most excited to see how God is going to do what God is going to do, because we have laid out a vision that we cannot possibly do without God being involved. So I think what I'm most excited about is watching this whole thing unfold and seeing what happens and being part of it.
I truly believe in building legacy. I think that we got enough challenge here in front of us. This church has an incredible legacy already, so I can't wait to see when, in 10, 11 years from now, we're going to look back and see the road that God has paved for us to, to get there. So it's going to be very exciting.
I'm most excited about seeing people who are marginalized and haven't had access find access.
We are blessed church family. God is on the move here in Orlando through us, through this church. If you are here tonight, it is probably because you are passionate about what's happening here in this place, and that you already believe in our church without walls concept. Thank you for your passion and the energy that you bring to what Whole Life is today and what Whole Life will be in 2036. Thank you so much for your questions and your engagement. Ken?
We know you've been here for an hour and 23 minutes at this point. We planned for it to go for an hour and a half. We have a favor to ask. If you need to leave, by all means, we understand. But if you could give us another 10 minutes of your time, you can stay at the table you're at, and our, our staff, our church staff, and those of us on this panel, and some of our board members, wanted to come to the table where you're at, and we'd just like to hear, at the end of this time, how'd you come in? What'd you feel like when you were coming in tonight? How do you feel as you're leaving? What do you want us to hear? What's important for you to, us to hear from you? So if you can give us another 10 minutes of your time, I appreciate it. If you can't, I promise I'm not taking names of people who walk out. The other thing that I want to commit to you is that if, at the end of that 10-minute period, you're like, Ken, I've got some really big concerns, or I have some really big questions, I'd like to, or I really need you to hear this, I'm going to stay here until the last one of you is done talking to me. So if I'm here, Andy, till 3 o'clock in the morning, I'll be here till 3 o'clock in the morning. I want to be here because I think it's really important for you to understand, we want this process to be transparent. We want you to feel like you have ownership in it, because the only way a mission and a vision and a strategy works is if everybody buys in. It's not if Ken buys in or our staff, it's got to be you. You have to believe in this and make it a part of what you believe in. And so that's really important to us. So thank you so much. I'm going to have a prayer right now, because once you get done with that, get your table talking to one of our team, you're more than free to leave whenever that is. And again, I will be staying around as long as need be. So let me have a prayer, and I thank you again for being here. Heavenly Father, thank you for each person who's so invested in Whole Life, who cares about the future of this church, that cares about what the vision of this church is. And Lord, what we recognize is, nobody cares more than you. This is your church, it's not ours. We're just stewards of what you've entrusted to us. So help us to be good stewards, we pray in your name. Amen. I love you. Now talk to my team.